I think that's what you have to think about is how people in Troy, the people who live in Troy tend to stay there for a long time, how they're going to regard this action if you vote to push your head forward. It's, you know, on all counts, this is not a good project for the city of Troy. It's not good for the people, the taxpayers. It's not good to the city administration to have functional headquarters, and it's certainly no way to treat an historic building that is one of the first resources of Troy. So I urge you not to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Does anyone else wish to address the council on any agenda item?
Hi there, council. I am going to read a couple of letters from folks who have contacted me. One is in New York City. One has elections for board and the other could make it. Real quick, when we get to the legislation, the deputy mayor and I and the court of council will give a presentation for Q and A for the council. The first one is from Kathy Sheen. She could not be here tonight. She is the Breslar County and Troy City historian. William Murta, the first keeper of the National Register of Historic Places, said, "Preservation engages the past in a conversation with the present over mutual concern for the future." This is from Kathy. It's short and sweet. "By thoughtfully and without most care in preserving the fabric of the theater, the building will breathe new life that it hasn't seen in 50 years. It's offering a sustainable solution by repurposing the theater into the council, assembly chambers, and other meetings that can be used by the community of Troy at large. Particular attention needs to be paid to accomplishing this in a way that pays respect to the theater with the lobby and the theater itself, thereby creating an engaging public space for the city of Troy. I will look to assist in the preservation of the murals and restoration of the lobby with historic images from Proctors to engage the public and celebrate the theater history of Troy." Next is from Jerry Decev. Jerry could not make it. As many of you know, Jerry, very, very prominent in theater, believes in historic preservation, very passionate about historic preservation, lives over on Fifth Ave in downtown. Hi Carmella, I want to apologize that I can't make it to the meeting tonight because of a previous engagement, but I want to say that I'm thoroughly in favor of the Proctors as City Hall initiative. It's a wonderful adaptive reuse of an iconic Troy building which will provide us with our own City Hall. Both of these things are important to our community. For the naysayers, ask them what their plan is to use the Proctors building and make it viable again, or will they wait another 40 or 50 years to figure that out while it falls into further disrepair? I'm sorry again that I can't be there, but please read this publicly as my statement tonight in support of this very important project. Last, this is from, we did not go and search for anyone, these came to us. This is from Don Ritner. Don, you should know, initially was not in favor of this project. After much review, after attending the public meetings, the session where we had the tour, and then Don, actually with BBL, Joan Nicole, and others, took a tour on his own, and we know he's a renowned historian. "The proposal to create a box within a box working office structure inside Proctors Theater in Troy is not an act of intrusion, but one of stewardship and imagination." Don is in New York City, sorry. "It represents a model of adaptive reuse that honors the integrity of Troy's historic fabric while ensuring its continued vitality in a changing urban and economic landscape. This concept offers a thoughtful, sustainable, and forward-looking approach to preservation as one that treats historic spaces not as relics to be frozen in time, but as living frameworks capable of supporting new functions, new communities, and new ideas. Adaptive reuse is widely recognized as one of the most sustainable strategies in architecture and urban planning. By repurposing existing structures, we conserve embodied energy, reduce material waste, and extend the lifespan of culturally significant buildings. In the case of Proctors, notably a landmark of Troy's golden age of entertainment and urban optimism, reuse is not only a sustainable choice, but also a civic responsibility. Allowing the theater to languish in vacancy or decay over the last 48 years has eroded the cultural and architectural identity of that part of downtown Troy. In contrast, adapting it for modern use injects new life into both the building and the city. The box within a box concept embodies this philosophy. Rather than altering or compromising the original structure, the design inserts a self-contained, reversible framework, an independent inner box, that allows for modern office functions to exist within the theater's grand value. This approach preserves the historic envelope while enabling a contemporary use that can support ongoing maintenance, community engagement, and economic sustainability. It's a preservation strategy that doesn't just save the building, it ensures it has a purpose, and with a room that can accommodate over 100 people, entertainment can once again be part of Proctors. Historic theaters like Proctors were built to inspire awe with soaring ceilings, ornate plasterwork, and dramatic arches. Spaces designed for spectacle and emotion, but these same qualities make adaption difficult. Conventional renovations often require cutting into walls, adding intrusive systems, or subdividing grand spaces into smaller, utertal area and rooms. The box within a box method avoids such damage. The inserted structure can be designed to rest lightly within the existing shell, touching the historic surfaces minimally, if at all. Mechanical systems, insulation, and acoustical treatments can be contained within the inner box, ensuring climate control and comfort for office workers without altering or harming the original finishes. In doing so, this design approach upholds the central tenets of preservation ethics: reversibility and legibility. Future generations will be able to remove or modify the inner structure without destroying or concealing the theater's character-defining features. Bring back the original theater if money and desire call for it. Visitors will always be aware of the original space, its volume, ornament, its history, and even as it functions in a completely new way. The theater thus remains both a memory and a participant in ongoing life of Troy. Using modern technology, a camera, glass walls, will allow visitors to see parts of the original theater. Restoring the three murals on the inside can be viewed as progress being made, an interpretive exhibit, and artifacts in a showcase. Troy has undergone a remarkable transformation over the past few decades, evolving from post-industrial decline into a dynamic hub of creativity, technology, and design. Yet sustainable revitalization depends on the continual reinvention of historic assets. By introducing modern working spaces into Proctors, this project bridges the past and the future of the city's economy. It allows Trojans to address the city government and utilize the large space for entertainment or other functions. Such adaptive reuse projects have proven transformative in cities across the country. The revitalization of industrial loss in Soho, the reuse of Union Station in Washington, D.C., and the insertion of modern offices and apartments into historic mills in Lowell, Holyoke, and right across the river in Cahoes all demonstrate how heritage buildings can anchor new economies. In Troy, Proctors Theater has the potential to become both a symbol and a catalyst for this next phase of demonstrating how preservation can coexist with innovation. The box within a box is not merely a technical strategy, it's a conceptual statement about how we inhibit history. The inner box, a working office space, symbolizes the creative and intellectual energy of contemporary Trojans. The outer box, the original theater, embodies the artistic and civic legacy that built Troy's identity in the first place. Together, they form a dialogue across time where the work of the present occurs literally and figuratively within the achievements of the past. This metaphor reinforces the role of architecture as a mediator between memory and progress. It allows occupants to feel the weight of history not as a constraint, but as an inspiration. By working within the theater, the modern user experiences the grandeur and the narrative of the space daily, creating a sense of continuity between Troy's past creativity and its future innovation. Looking ahead, the principles embodied in this project point toward the future of preservation itself. As urban centers evolve and technological needs shift, flexibility will be the hallmark of sustainable heritage management. Buildings that survive will be those that can adapt to change without compromising their character. The box within a box approach, scalable, reversible, and respectful, offers a model for countless other structures facing obsolete. It enables communities to preserve their landmarks while adopting them to modern uses, thereby aligning environmental responsibility with cultural continuity. In an era where demolition and new construction too often dominate development discourse, the adaptive reuse of Proctors Theater represents a counterpoint, a demonstration that innovation can emerge from restraint, and that the most radical act may be to preserve creatively. The project is not about freezing the past, but about designing a future where history remains part of daily life and where Troy's architectural legacy continues to work, to inspire, and to evolve. Creating a box within a box working office structure inside Proctors Theater is an act of adaptive imagination. It celebrates the building's past while ensuring its continued relevance. It preserves the integrity of an irreplaceable landmark, energizes Troy's urban core, and models a sustainable approach to preservation for the 21st century. By embracing the old and the new, this project demonstrates that historic structures can still play vital roles in contemporary life. The theater, once a stage for performance, becomes again a stage for creativity, this time for the ideas and enterprises that will shape the future of Troy. Don Ritner, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Does anyone else wish to address the council?
Sorry, Jack, it seemed like a tough act to follow, so I thought I'd wait. I would like to point out that there is no quarterly report on your desk tonight. It was due on October 31st. You guys should be discussing it tonight. There's a really foggy situation going on with the city's finances. You're looking at a budget for 2026. Revenues are overstated, expenditures are understated. You have a responsibility to the constituents that you're still serving to make sure the city's on sound financial footing. This is a city of working-class people. You should know this. Working-class people can afford huge hikes in their taxes later because of a mistake you made today. 30 years ago, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't know how many years ago it was, years ago, a city council made decisions that led this city to be in receivership from the state. And we wonder what kind of decisions those were. This is that kind of decision. You're committing the city and the taxpayers to 30 years on a lease payment. You don't know what the other expenses are. I hope you're asking tonight, and I hope that you're asking for more evidence than trust me, bro, because you've given Carmella an awful lot of leash, and she lost you guys in election. This was not a referendum on just Donald Trump. This was a referendum on the way that the city is being managed. And if you want to take a look, take a look at the financials that she's turned in so far. If you want to take a look at the kind of projects she does, take a look at the Fair Park tent, which I believe is being disassembled because it has rotting floors, and the roof is going to have to be moved. And the city spent $750,000 on that. And you're about to turn around and tell them, you know what, let's give you a few more million, and we'll trust you on that one, too. How many times can you guys be abused? What do you still owe? You don't owe anything to Carmella, but you owe it to your neighbors, all the people that you campaigned, whose doors you knocked on, that you talked to, who have kids, who want to raise their kids in this town. You owe them something. I at least hope that you delay this and give the administration a couple of weeks to come up with some better answers on the financials. I think that you at least owe your constituents that, but we'll see. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, council members and members of the public. My name is Daniel Morrissey, and I live in the Sickaway neighborhood. My background is in architecture, human-centered design, and sustainability. I would support moving City Hall to Proctors if it was a good idea, but it's not. I was there with Don Ritner when he guided a tour for last month, and I can confidently say there's no way to insert a new volume without irreversibly destroying the character-defining features of the theater portion of the building, which, as has been stated, is the most significant portion of the building. The project is also unfeasible financially, and there's no way for it to happen for less than $1 million. Far from it, actually. I think that the costs would quickly, quickly skyrocket when it's too late to walk away. And back to structural systems, there's literally no way to create an independent inner box from a structural perspective. It's impossible. Imagine defying the laws of gravity just to get this vote passed, and then later presenting a structural system that is both intrusive and destructive, because that is what will happen. It's the only way. Voting for this is irresponsible. Please recognize that Proctors can be revitalized, but not in the way that it is being proposed. It can be done in a reversible way, but only at great expense. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Hi, my name is Noel Haynes. I live on 15th Street in Troy.
Noel, could we ask that you either move the mic down a little bit? Thank you, thank you very much.
Now I lost my train of thought. I've lived here all my life. I've worked here my entire workforce life. I put 34 years into Samaritan. We love Troy. My husband worked for Tal Don Geraldi for 26 years. We love it. We'd like to be able to use the Proctors building also if it were feasible. I'm hearing a box in a box, when in all actuality, I feel sometimes that it sounds like it's a boat with a hole in it. I have lived here. I have seen the city being ripped down, the entire city, no place to shop. Then we had our City Hall built. 30 years after that, they had to take it down. I don't want to have to go through anything like that again. I think there's a little more than we can handle right now. We're not a rich city, and to have to make a museum inside of the building, we just need a City Hall. Please think about this when you're all voting. And this is not anything against anyone, it's just how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Does anyone else wish to address the council on any agenda item this evening?
Erica Vale, Troy resident, and been here since 2008. And when I first got here, a community group rose up to question a plan for the theater part of the complex to be torn down for just a regular office building to be put up, very basic. And we saved Troy Proctors Theater from being torn down, from being demolished. It's solid. It is poured concrete. We've heard from experts, who are experts in their field, and then we hear from opinions of people who have lived here, and perspectives of people who are professionals in their own fields, and they have, in my own profession, when I was in corporate America, if I ever proposed something like this, I'd be laughed out of the room. I'd lose my job right away. So I'm sorry that some of you lost your jobs today, or this week, but it's part of this that caused it. No one's listening to taxpayers. We know our taxes are going to go up because of lawsuits, now a second lawsuit. And then, like the last building, didn't last even 30 years, or maybe 30 years, and now we're signing a 30-year lease so that Proctors can be torn down. We're just delaying. The maintenance of it is not even on the budget. There is no line item for maintenance, and that's why the last one had to be torn down. So the city does not have a good track record with that. Tracking this as a citizen has been a moving target because the numbers keep changing, and things are getting rushed and pushed through. Is it a vanity project? And if so, it's not going to be a great vanity project when the legacy left is that a theater is being turned into office buildings, except not being torn down, and yet people can walk in, and yet they're not really able to use the theater, and yet they can't really see it, they're not improving the inside at all, they're just drilling in. Well, the experts already talked about that. I don't need to go down that road. So what it's not, I have heard some business owners in town say, yes, Troy has changed. A lot of new blood in town, a lot different from 15 years ago when I led this project with the Troy Proctors Foundation. What they're not accounting for is that, yes, it's changed, and maybe there's someone here who has a child who's five years old today, but will become the next person to say, this is my future. Maybe he's inspired by it, maybe, but we won't know if it's being used to house understaffed City Hall as it is. We're understaffed, and as Russ Ziemba said, a square foot per capita is good business for a city. And yet, we're under it right now. It's 36,000 square feet, and that includes common area, and now we're going down to 30. It just doesn't make sense. The numbers don't add up. It's just fiscally irresponsible. It's counterintuitive, walking into a building that's not being taken care of except for a really low-ceilinged room. It's not something I would want to walk into just to pay a bill. I don't get it. It just doesn't make sense. Looking at the latest floor plans that were submitted last week, the offices are tiny, the shared offices are tiny, there's no space for storage. Where is everything going to be stored? There's no comment about this. It's great that the mayor can come up here and read the words of people who are not experts in historic restoration. We heard from Jack Wade, who is. He lives in town. He's lived here his whole life, world famous, and yet a lot of time was spent reading letters from someone who writes books about history, and I won't get catty about the spell-checking. But it's just a bait and switch. There's been many of them. Since I've lived here, there's been many proposals for the space that now is vacated because City Hall was torn down. And the city approves a project, and then the developer says, oh, wait, we forgot something. And then it's scope creep, and the numbers change, and we're supposed to accept it, and they haven't been accepted, which is why there's still a hole on River Street. So there's not a lot of good track record with good decisions here. So I'd like to see a budget line item go into the city's budget for maintenance, take care of our stuff. And I think party lines at the local level is boring, just let's all get along. We need to work together. This is our city. It's a small city. It doesn't deserve infighting. So please do the right thing, delay this vote until the right research can be done, we get the answers. We, as tax-paying citizens, deserve to hear answers. And so far, all we've heard is selling and pushing through a project that just doesn't make sense in any way. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica.
Wasn't going to speak, but my name is Jeff Yol, longtime resident of Troy, own a bunch of stuff around town, and I wanted to lend my expert opinion on this matter. Since 2012, I have completed 27 historic tax credit redevelopments in Albany Schnecki and Troy, six in Troy. The latest one was with Catholic High in Lantingberg, completely full, if anybody's wondering. This was my idea, so you're here because of me, and I apologize for that. It's a good idea, and it is financially sound. I was with the construction crew this morning, walking through the means and methods of how you actually do build. A box in a box, which is a poor term, lest we argue on that, we're stuck with it for I really came up here because I was actually sitting in your position 17 years ago. Erica just mentioned the tearing down of the theater that was proposed in 2008, and I sat through a four-hour meeting where we were bombarded with very negative comments about tearing down City Hall, and it actually led me to become an accidental preservationist. And in 2020, during COVID, when there was a massive amount of federal funding available and state funding available for what I'll deem pet projects, I um, I went to Mr. Nicola and asked if he'd be willing to sell Proctors, uh, with the intent of bringing it back as a theater, either a movie theater or a music venue, uh, I've been involved in a few mu- music venues and have some good relationships with, uh, movie theaters. The costs to actually rehab this building in a manner of which you'd have to do it to app- to apply historic tax credits to it is well in excess of sixty million dollars. Uh, and while I could close the gap a little bit and try to bring back the theater to what everyone wants it to be, it's an impossibility at this point, uh, and it's an impossibility for a very long time. Joe has done a good job maintaining this building, I think you've all been in it since we made this announcement. It is, uh, it's been heated and cooled at a level where it was allowed to sustain. It is built in an incredible fashion, it's certainly not going anywhere. But this idea was, was sort of ripped off of a, a different theater in Brooklyn that did an infill project and, and left, uh, the rest of the theater distressed as is for future redevelopment. Um, no work that's gonna be done is going to, uh, destroy the historic integrity of the theater. Uh, we've met with Shippo and they love the project. So I know there's a lot of pull back and forth, and, uh, you know, I wish we could have been more clear on, uh, a couple of things, but, you know, from the bottom of my heart, as somebody who bleeds Troy and always will bleed Troy, this is not going to bankrupt the city. This is going to strengthen the city long-term. And, uh, yeah, I hope you find it and you just support it, and, uh, congratulations to all those who won yesterday, and congratulations to all those who lost yesterday. Have a great night.
Thanks, Jeff. Does anyone else wish to address the council on any agenda item? Seeing none, we will move on with our agenda. Ordinances, ordinance forty-eight is, uh, for introduction only, uh, we will not be acting on that this evening. Ordinance fifty-four, ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Troy to enter into a thirty-year lease agreement with the Troy Local Development Corporation, Troy LDC, to rent and operate the former Proctors Theater facility as Troy City Council, Troy City Hall. Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration, is there a motion?
Motion.
Councilmember Brezina, second?
Second.
Councilmember Soriano. Discussion on the ordinance.
Well, hello, uh, city council, um, I'll ask, uh, the deputy mayor and our corporation counsel to, uh, to come up, please. We have a PowerPoint presentation that the city clerk, uh, will be putting up to talk about some, um, of the issues that we've already discussed, but also talk about some of the issues that were raised this evening. Just so, um, while we're waiting for the PowerPoint, um, um, Mayor Carmella Mantello, in case you didn't know, Deputy Mayor Seamus Donley, and Corporation Counsel Rick Morrissey are with us this evening.
Make motion for brief recess while we wait for PowerPoint. Is that the consensus of the council for a brief recess?
I'll suck it up.
Okay. Five minutes? Five minutes.
It's very long. About two hours, okay. Sounds good.
It's up to you.
I think everyone's happy. Let's, I see thumbs up, we're good.
Very good. That's a great, great segue, um, because that's what we're talking about tonight is moving forward. A couple of things, and Maria, if you could go to the next slide. You know, as many folks know, during my council president days, um, I made no bones about city hall on city floor here being a temporary space. If you talk to the property owner, the property owner here will tell you this was to be temporary. Well, fast forward fourteen years later, um, it's essentially become a permanent home for city hall. And I made no bones to really find us a permanent home. As many folks know, I was elected, uh, January twenty twenty-four began, and one of the top three priorities, safer, cleaner, affordable, city, number two, lead pipe replacement, number three, a permanent city hall. And then so forth with the many other projects like Nick Poole, Burke Firehouse, and many others that we have put back on track. As many folks know, we worked immediately, January to April, on RFP. I really want to give a hats and a shout-out to Seamus and the team, uh, Joe Maz, Rick Morrissey, Gabrielle, the whole gang, worked on this RFP, as we know, an RFP doesn't happen overnight. So from January to March, we worked on RFP, got out the door, April of twenty twenty-four, eighteen months ago. At that time, so many people said, oh, you're gonna be lucky that you get two, three proposals. Lo and behold, eight proposals came in, in July of twenty twenty-four. So, let's really think about this when we talk about rush. This began January of twenty twenty-four, and here we are eighteen months later. So in July, the RFP was returned, in August, our committee, uh, sifted through the RFPs. We did site visits, we went through propos- proposals, and in August, um, to January, worked on that. And then in January, we narrowed the proposals down to two. Initially, it was four, then down to two. The proposals were so creative, so unique, and geographically located. And a couple of people here tonight, I want to, um, mix in with this PowerPoint, some of the issues that were raised. And I know Seamus will also, um, and he'll pick up whatever I miss. But one of the things that's been said, why didn't we build, um, you know, maybe down Price Chopper, maybe on somebody else's property, Roddy Vellini, maybe at One Monument, to build a new structure? Because there was proposals to build a new structure, would have cost in the tens of millions of dollars right up front in terms of, we would have had to bond the city directly, et cetera, but we know what new construction now costs. And I must say, when Jeff Beal, uh, came to us with his proposal, he said, now, you know, are you guys really looking out of the box? And we said, that's why we wrote the RFP that way, because we wanted that RFP to be creative, to really get folks thinking, whether it be the Golub's over at Price Chopper, whether it be the ICC, you name it. We wanted folks to think creatively. What this proposal did, after we narrowed the proposals down to two, one of the proposals was new construction. And the team actually had a finance team. But this proposal checked all the boxes. Somebody men- mentioned on the bus line, somebody mentioned accessibility, it's on the bus line. And yes, you're gonna hear in a few minutes, we know it has parking. Financially, we are going to talk to you about that in-depth because you have the proposed lease in front of you. You've had it for a week, we asked, please call us with questions. To call the majority of rubber stamp is just so misleading because Ryan Brosning, council member D two, literally sat with Seamus at least four times about this proposal. Bill Keel called us, Tom Casey, literally, question after question. We received no questions from the minority, you had it in your hands. But I really wanna make it clear, you had this, and, and we're here to talk about it. And we thank the council members who did reach out to us. So fast forward, in June of twenty twenty-five, after we narrowed it down to the two, we announced in June of twenty twenty-five, after meeting with the financial teams with both proposals, the new construction one and the Proctors team, and we announced Proctors. It checked all the boxes, it checked the financial, it checked the square footage, which we'll talk about shortly. It checked the parking, yes, we have parking, we own the parking garage. We snowplowed the parking garage now, we snowplowed the alleyway. We literally are doing the maintenance now, and you will see that in the budget that we'll talk about in a few minutes. Um, so we announced in June, in July, the public meetings began, many of you attended the public meetings, I believe all of you. We had the tour, uh, August twenty twenty-five, city council approved Proctors as a suitable location. October twenty twenty-five, the LDA was approved by the council, we signed that LDA. And then here we are tonight for the council to vote on that last step in terms of the proposed lease agreement. Should the council approve this, construction will begin December of twenty twenty-five. So real quick, if we can move to the lec- next slide, um, thank you, and Maria, you know, we, we have to point this out because, uh, many times, and still to today, including Paul Vanderburg, if anyone listens to him, but many people are still saying, there's no parking. There is parking, on any day of the week, there are over a hundred and some odd spots in the parking garage. Parking studies have been done, our parking, uh, department, uh, the parking supervisor has also, um, done a study in terms of what permits are out there, et cetera. We have over a hundred, and that is without including RPI who will be moving from Proctors. So there's forty some odd more spaces on top of that. There will be parking on Fourth Street, handicapped accessible, handicap parking. There will be parking for visitors in the garage, both for employees and visitors in handicapped spots. As many folks know, we've talked about it many times, the awning that will connect the parking garage that the city owns to the back entrance of city hall, which will be an acceptable, an, an, um, accessible entrance way. Additionally, I mentioned the pathways to Additionally, I mentioned the pathways to Fourth Street and the alleyway William Street entrance. Additionally, there will be renovations, repair, restoration to the Fifth Ave garage, including the elevator, which needs to be upgraded. Saying that also, a couple of people mentioned the garage and the safety. Don't you think we have thought about that? A, the garage is safer. We now have a camera system in the garage. Our facilities department has been maintaining the garage. The garage is cleaner. But saying that, don't you think that we have thought about that safety aspect? And with the activity in this corridor, it's going to make it safer. So we really do feel, obviously, in terms of the parking, that that issue is addressed. If we can move on, Maria, real quick. Yep.
Before we get too far ahead, can you just go over what the boxes we're checking off for the RFP process was?
Sure, square footage, financial, parking, accessibility, and then lastly, pride. I mean, we all know, having a temporary floor, we're the only municipality in this, in the state that does not own its own City Hall, that rents a floor for its City Hall. And certainly pride was a part of that. The bus route was also part of it. Obviously, the bus route includes Fourth Street. So saying that, did I miss anything? Financial, obviously, square footage, parking, accessibility, and... Right. I mean, obviously, preservation. We didn't think of Proctors when we put the RFP out there. So this not only checks all those boxes, council member, to your question, it also checks other boxes that we were not anticipating. Preservation of an early 1900s theater that at some point, and I really want to give a shout out to Joe Nicola, who did save this building. A shout out to RPI, who also had a hand in saving this building in terms of the multi-millions of dollars that was pumped in to preserve this building, to save it. But at some point, he's moving on. I mean, he's in the latter years, obviously, don't say that to Joe, but if he's listening. But at some point, he's moving on, he's going to retire. So this not only adaptive reuses a historic building from the early 1900s that we didn't even have as one of those fulfillments in the RFP. But in the RFP, obviously, room for a City Hall, accessibility, user-friendly, bus route, transportation, parking, parking, parking. And then the pride, pride was a factor. We, we want that building, we want people 30, 40, 50 years from now to say, wow, look at the vision of these folks. Not just with the building, we're preserving a building, but also having a permanent home. As we all know, that rental that we are now renting here, it has an escalator of 3%, which we'll talk about shortly when we get into the financial aspect. So at some point, you know, you, you have to cut that cord. And you have to think about the future, the long term. And that's where our administration, we've done that with many projects, not just City Hall. You know, we've done it with so many other projects that, you know, we cob. And yes, sometimes it's easy for government just to pay that yearly rent and forget about the hassles, you know, coming down here and having, you know, folks express maybe their support, opposition. This has been a long process, this has not been rushed. A lot of time, hundreds of hours, on both ends of the teams, from preservation groups to our team meeting with BBL, whether it be fuller plans, whether it be financial. And somebody mentioned how the numbers change. Of course, the numbers change. We're going to get that number as low as possible, that annual payment that we're going to make to the LDC, it's negotiating. That's business, and that's what you're going to hear tonight. Another thing, and Maria will talk about this quick, Seamus, sorry. Preservation, this is, as many folks know, we talk about the box in the box. As Jeff said, we hate referring into that, but that's the, the name that has come about, the box in the box. It's in Assembly Hall. And as you can see, it can be used for small theater, to community room, to council chambers. Obviously, the council chambers with folded tables and old drapes. This is not suitable for us. We have pride here in Troy. This is going to build that pride, answer a long-term financial situation where our rent continues to escalate and be more user-friendly than City Hall right now on this floor is for the disabled, the elderly, et cetera. Has anyone parked out front? Talk to Jerry Ford, he's parked out front, and he got clipped getting out of his car when I come into council meeting. Talk to any handicapped person who tries to get into City Hall here now. They have a difficult time. We have to help them time to time. This, we have thought about everything. Seamus, literally, the developers hate Seamus right now because he has literally negotiated this to the point where we're talking receptacles. We're talking where wheelchairs can pull up to get their license, or to get their marriage license, see the buried treasure, to pay a bill. The, the windows will be at the level of a wheelchair. We have literally thought to the T on everything. And, you know, I really want to thank Councilmember Brosman. He took a tour, he talked about the electrical, he saw much of the space which was mentioned tonight. We're going to talk about that. There is incredible space to store our vital statistics, to other records. This checks all the boxes and at least 25 more.
I had another question.
Sure, please.
What came second in the RFP process?
The second proposal was over on Old Six. Very complicated, complex project, and it would have been new construction. It would have really revitalized because, you know, one of the checkmarks, I apologize, was revitalization to wherever City Hall was going to be located. And that was another factor. Obviously, Proctors does that more for the corridor. This would have certainly revitalized that neighborhood. Just the financial, it wasn't working out. Would have cost the taxpayers in the city much more dollars once we sat down with the folks for City Hall. And it would have been thanks to the corner store there. So the person also is having a difficult time with the properties, not full ownership on top of it. So basically, there was other complex issues to that. But it was intriguing for us, it was one that we were really interested in. But it just didn't work out at the end of the day. So saying that, the box in the box, if council members, you know, want to ask questions while we move along here. But as you can see, the Assembly Hall is also going to have windows in various areas along the corridor, so folks can actually see the theater. And somebody mentioned, if somebody does have $80 million down the road, you can pull the Assembly Hall out. The one thing that is going to be taken out are 200 or 300 seats, I believe, about 200 or so. They are not the original seats. And somebody mentioned earlier about Ship... They will be stored as well, I apologize. Thank you, Seamus, and jump in whenever. Also, one of the things that somebody mentioned, Ship-O. Ship-O actually feels that this could be a model for the state and the Northeast. So, you know, Seamus will talk about a little also about how Ship-O does support this project. You know, also, I have to hit this right up front. It's been mentioned multiple times about lawsuits, et cetera. So we have two notice of claims. I am very pleased to announce tonight, we have reached a tentative agreement, and the council will be receiving legislation in November at the finance meeting authorized by me to sign that settlement. So I really want to give a huge shout out to Rick Morrissey, to Seamus. Again, they have met multiple times with the attorneys from the property owners team. And so those notice of claims will be settled.
Will that include the, the early termination of...
Everything, yep. I'll let Rick talk.
The proposed settlement resolves all claims.
The back, the back rent, the unpaid rent?
The unpaid, there are no claims for back rent. There is a claim for unpaid CAM charges, that is resolved.
And the early termination is...
And the early term, well, yes, the early termination claim is also resolved.
The claim, correct.
Council President, is there a monetary, is there a monetary part of that settlement?
I'll let Rick.
I think I can do it, okay. Yeah, the, the monetary claim, the payment of the CAM charges is the payment of the CAM charges as they would have been without interest or penalty.
Okay. I have a question about the preservation side.
Sure.
I see what people are concerned about now that I'm looking at this picture. Because that's just a floating, that's just a floating box. How is it being secured?
Oh, yeah.
To the ground?
Yep, yep.
So, great question, council member. So there are going to be, there will be concrete that gets poured there. There will be steel beams that also get set up on the platform. That will then set a floor, subfloor flooring that goes out there as well. So this is one of the earlier reiterations to try to get a feel of what the box in the box looks like. I get it, we all hate that term now too, trust me, I've heard it 700 times. But, so, you know, there will be a concrete floor that gets poured there. Then that will raise that up a level for a subfloor, the flooring. There will be then steel beams that get put up. And then there will also be the ceiling that goes on top.
If it was to be removed, how would you remove the cement and steel beams?
So that's a good question. I mean, just, I'd imagine, just like any other demolition or any other type of activity when you're knocking down some structure, they are perfectly suitable steel beams for this type of structure. They are, without knowing the exact term right off the top of my head, but lightweight steel-type beams. So they're not something that, again, we all talk about that if down the road, somebody wants to spend $80 million in this theater, which I think has always been something that gets said frankly as, as, you know, would be great to see, but probably very unlikely. You know, and then the concrete floor as well, those seats could then get, you could refurbish that, get placed on that as well. But it'd be definitely, otherwise, it's framed out in drywall. So it's not like you're building a brick structure inside or things like that, which you could even argue could come down to, but...
You mentioned Ship-O's approval of this project appraisal. Do you have that in writing somewhere?
So Ship-O, through the seeker process, they do make their comments. I think some of that was noted as well. There was Ship-O staff that through one of their many walkthroughs of this, did note saying that this is kind of a model of how these types of restoration should go. I think the thought in behind it, and I was going to bring some of this up later on, but I know there's a lot of comments here, and I get it. I think probably everybody would almost agree that if it was feasible to make this back into a theater, a theater we all think of, Broadway, Proctors in Schenectady. You know, if that was really possible, if that was financially feasible, it would have been done by now. It's something that would be great to see for everybody. But that being said, again, and I take nothing away from the folks that have spoken with passion that, you know, have tried to save this building in the past. All of that's a worthy cause, I love history, I love preservation myself. So, you know, but I think the thought is coming from is that now, right now, everybody is having this, you know, feeling of no one can go in and enjoy this theater. I'd like to actually ask, who's been going in there lately and walking around this theater? Who has enjoyed this theater the way it's intended to in the last 50 years? The answer factually is nobody, because it's not an activated building. It will now be activated, folks are going to be able to enjoy the historic lobby, they're going to be able to enjoy the historic arcade. There's going to be odes to its history all over, and just like the mayor mentioned, there's going to be windows that you can see balconies and different things. Don Ritner, in correlation with city staff as well. This is where we can work on grant opportunities for our historic preservation. There's old painting in the front hallway, we were looking to restore. You could restore one of the balconies, that's where the window would look out to, to maybe give a museum-like feel, to show what it really was like back then. If this was not happening, if City Hall was not going here, this building would be locked. And outside of an occasional tour possibly, nobody'd be enjoying the structure. This is a real way to start enjoying its history. And again, I think a lot of people have to understand as well, this type of theater, just like most businesses, you know, if you have a restaurant with a certain amount of seats, you know, you have, you realize that you have to sell a certain amount to make that work. To fill all the seats in this theater, just like Model, Music Hall, everywhere else, to fill the seats in this theater, you have to have Broadway-like productions. It's impossible, because when this was built, it was during the Volvo era where I think you just showed up with a little suitcase and popped out and started doing your show. People have to realize, when Wicked comes to Proctors over in Schenectady, it shows up with three tractor trailers. So not only take the money out of it, the functionality of it being a realistic theater that could survive financially, right away, the structure of it from that point of view, it's not feasible. So that is where Ship-O, that comment was made, is because we're activating a structure now. You know, it's activated so people can enjoy it compared to it being completely locked up, where no one can enjoy any of it except for, you know, the four floors in the office space right now and the facade.
To answer your question slightly more directly, Ship-O has put it in writing. We have a letter, I thought it was attached to one of the prior legislations. We can provide it to you.
Could we do that in between this and in the upcoming hour?
I can get it, yeah.
Sure.
I will, I think I have it electronically, and I can email it to all of you.
Maria will help with it.
Councilmember Vera.
I thought I was being pretty direct, but all right.
Hold on, hold on.
Chair, I can listen.
Yeah, just didn't take my time away, so. So you're pouring concrete, is there going to be a protective layer between the floor and where the concrete is going to be poured?
Yes, and I mean, again, keep in mind, this is like most projects that they, that... Most projects that are taken on by developers or anything like that.
Okay, I hate talking technicalities, but here goes. So imagine you have to level the floor out. We'll be using structural foam to actually level the floor out, and the concrete Seamus is talking about is only two inches thick. And then the light gauge metal framing will go on top of that. So if you wanted to go back in and demo it, you're demoing two inches of concrete, and then the structural foam, which was used to level, just gets removed.
That's what I was looking for.
Yep. I should have remembered the structural foam, because that was one of my first questions.
Councilmember Vera.
I had a question for Corporation Council, going back to the two matters of litigation, or notices of claim. You said there was a monetary amount associated with the first one, we were just going to have to pay the CAM charges?
Yes.
No interest, no penalties?
No interest.
Which we would have originally owed had we paid it on time?
Correct.
What about the second notice of claim?
The second notice of claim, we have agreed to support an application that will be made by First Columbia to the Troy IDA. To, they're seeking an amendment to their current pilot agreement, both in terms of the monetary amounts and an extension of term to 2039, and a reasonable adjustment, given the fact that the city is vacating the premises in the number of FDEs that they're going to be required to have.
Is there a dollar amount associated with...
There is not a specific dollar amount associated with it. There are some level charges that I can provide to you. I couldn't provide to you on hand, you know.
Okay.
Okay. But those things would be, those things will require an application to the Troy IDA.
Right.
There will be a public hearing, the IDA itself will have to approve those.
Okay, so they negotiated a tax break on this, on this property?
They already have a pilot agreement on this property.
Right, it's a modification... Right, it's a modification of the pilot agreement that they currently have on this.
Correct.
And an extension of its, its term.
Correct. And, and it's something, frankly, it's something they could, they could have. Uh, I, you all might, may or may not be aware that commercial, uh, real estate is having a, a difficult moment in history at this time. This particular building is, is commercial real estate. It's something that, uh, you might have seen an application for, uh, an extension and an alter, and an amendment of the pilot in any event.
But otherwise, uh, no, no direct payments?
No direct payments from the city to First Columbia. Other, other than the CAM charges I spoke of.
Uh, for the, the, the other notice of claim?
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brosnan?
I got one more question I raised for you. Sorry, I'm not feeling well. Uh, you were saying that it's going for the IDA in the settlement? Is it, the city just needs to support them in their effort? Or does the IDA need to approve them for them to?
The city, the IDA is, has a certain amount of independence. The city needs to support them in their effort.
So if the IDA decides against them, that will not send us back into some kind of?
If the IDA just, does not grant the approval, then the parties reserve all rights. We could negotiate further. We could go back to litigation. It does depend on the IDA's approval ultimately.
Thank you. Council President.
Councilmember Vera.
So I have a follow-up question on that. In, in the lease agreement, I saw, um.
In the lease agreement with, uh?
The one that we're entertaining this year.
Okay, yeah.
It goes under section, yeah, two point oh two that said, uh, we're making a statement. Presumably these statements are being made, uh, for the lenders.
Correct, for the, for the bond buyers.
So it says there are no action suits or proceedings pending to the knowledge of the city threatened against or affecting the city in any court. Uh, I'll skip the rest, but basically that if adversely determined, uh, would have a material, the adverse effect of the ability of the city to perform its obligations under this lease agreement. So in your opinion, the negotiations that you, you have to date specifically with that second notice of claim that would require approval by the IDA.
So the negoti-
You don't, you don't think it rises to the level of, of?
The negotiations give me, uh, much more comfort with that representation. But in addition, the amount at stake with regard to the second notice of claim, in my view, is not what the claim purports to be. And therefore I would, in my opinion, the, what an adverse material effect is, that it may not rise to the level of that.
And I, I did anticipate you would have that opinion. So the very next clause in the contract says that the operations to be conducted by the city of the facility, meaning Proctors, uh, are essential to governmental functions of the city or the services the city provides to its citizens. The city has an immediate need for the facility and such need is not temporary and is not expected to diminish during the lease. If for some reason we go back to litigation on that second notice of claim for the early termination, isn't there the potential that we would still be in this current lease until 29? And therefore would not have a need for additional space?
The, would you?
I can give it to you.
Yeah, you're gonna have to.
Is that close to me?
But, but, I mean, you see what I do here with. Yeah, it's, you can read that.
So, your question again, I'm sorry.
I, I mean, I can just read it again, but basically the, you know, my interpretation of H, and you should read it, you know, yourself, but, uh, it, it basically says that we have an immediate need for the facility, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We do have an immediate need for the facility, yes. But I, I have read H by the way, but I just.
Well, no, I know. I, I meant, I meant just to familiarize. I, I, yeah, I didn't suggest that you weren't familiar with the terms of the contract. Um, but the exact language is what I was referring to. Um, if, if Councilman Brosnan's, uh, his, his, not theory, but his suggestion that if the IDA did not approve, uh, an, an extension of the pilot agreement for First Columbia for this facility, we could be back at the negotiating table with First Columbia.
Correct.
And a potential outcome of that could be that we are not able to terminate our lease early.
We have terminated our lease, okay? So the potential outcome of a litigation could be that.
It's just monetary.
It could be monetary, correct. But we still have a need for a facility. By the way, I, I should.
That does answer my question.
I should also represent one, one other thing. There is another part of the settlement in case there is a holdover provision in the settlement agreement. If we have to stay past January first, 2027, which we do not expect to stay, uh, we have, uh, negotiated terms for that. Basically, I have to hold over rent.
Is it different than the holdover terms in our current lease agreement?
No, it's exactly the same.
Okay, so what was that, twenty or ten percent? What was it, an additional rent?
Hundred and twenty-five percent.
Hundred and twenty, twenty-five percent.
It was a hundred and fifty percent on the old lease.
Yes, I recall we, at the same time, we negotiated in an escalator and full CAM charges. We did fix that one item.
Council President. Councilmember Sorian.
What happens if First Columbia, um, finds a tenant? Before the lease, or?
So, so we have to give notice of an intention to hold over by October first. If we do not give notice by that day, we have to be out of here by December thirty-first.
Okay. But so, but if First Columbia already finds someone, finds a tenant?
First Columbia has agreed to the notice provision, okay?
So could you just clarify the full amount of the settlement?
The full amount of the settlement is the CAM charges from 2024 that we were never paid.
Do you have that?
It's about a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars.
Um, and if I may note too, just, uh, as we go down this path of the unforeseen, so the, uh, GMP, the Guaranteed Max Price Construction Contract that LDC will enter in with Columbia and BBL, there is, uh, clauses in there uh, for any delays that are unforeseen, although again, no one is anticipating that. We've been assured, um, a lot of times that this can get done. And, uh, but again, just to protect everything, so if that does trigger where we do have to be here and we are paying holdover rent past that, we would then have liquidated damages against the construction company and the developer. And at that point, they would basically be liable for every day longer that we did stay here. Nobody's goal, unforeseen, but I do just want to make it clear that there is that protection in the construction agreement as well.
Shall we move on, please?
Yep.
We go to the next slide.
Yep, next slide. The next, this is the arcade, as many folks know who attended, uh, the open house uh, back in July. Um, this would just be a conceptual renovation of that historic arcade. Um, you know, once again preserving, but also thinking about the future. Next slide. Just to give you a visual, assembly space, this is essentially what that assembly hall would look like. And once again, um, we have talked about putting, should this pass, we move forward, a preservation committee of Liz Reese from the Art Center, Kathy Sheehan from the County Historical Society and others, um, to really begin thinking out of the box in this case of, um, historic types of architect, um, of pictures of, um, you know, other historical artifacts that Kathy and others have mentioned, that they would like to see incorporated in, um, these spaces. Uh, Maria, next slide. Um, as you can see, the assembly space could be used for council meetings, uh, community meetings, small theater, uh, the theatrical performances, which is really cool, but it can be, uh, used for several purposes. It'll be a hundred plus seating, um, and so certainly, um, and obviously you can add seats to that, um, the seats will be movable. Uh, next slide, uh, the office building. Many folks have seen this. If you attended some of the public meetings, the before and the after. Um, it was mentioned, um, just about, uh, the theater and the office space and the condition. These are state-of-the-art offices. Um, the office space, when you look at the floor plans, you'll notice, um, we're utilizing the space more efficiently. If you look at city floor, and Shane will talk a little bit about this, because we did look at each, um, department, each office space. What's accessible? How much space isn't being utilized? When you look at this floor, there are hundreds of square feet not being utilized sufficiently now. And we'll talk about that when we get to the floor plans. But once again, Joe Nacola, RPI, have pumped millions of dollars into, you can see the after, um, where RPI, the chamber and others, um, currently occupy this space.
Council President.
Yep.
Can we go back two slides? How are we getting electrical and HVAC to this part of the box in a box? And is it gonna be like big air ducts for the HVAC? Or is it gonna be mini split units with some apricots that would come into it? What's the, what's the plan to get this to be a usable space?
I might, let me see if I can do this, otherwise I have to tap, uh, Jeff Beal back in. But I do, um, I know there has been mention of, uh, split units. Um, I know the HVAC system is basically gonna be drawn down from the, uh, ceiling, the roof of the actual, uh, building, uh, fed straightly down to the, uh, assembly hall. We can call it that so we can stop calling it box in a box, down to assembly hall. Um, I do believe there's split loo, split unit involved as well. And then I apologize, the other question, copper.
How are you getting the electrical in there?
Okay, so that's another, that's a question off the top of my head. I do not know. But again, um, uh, I have great trust in BBL who's overseeing, uh, a lot of projects in the region. I know that they have a way to get it there, but, um, where exactly is it funneling from? Uh, off the top of my head, I do not know.
So if you were putting the whole of the roof and spreading down the, uh, HVAC units, how are you willing to do that without affecting Chippewa?
Chris is here.
Perfect.
Well, here's our city engineer, Chris Lee.
Hey, Chris, I'm very sorry.
The most likely game plan for the HVAC, for the historic theater portion is to punch through the courtyard, the interior courtyard of the property.
Alright, so we're not gonna be hitting any of the historic parts of the building? We're gonna come out from the exterior and, and then come through a non-historic section to come to the historic section? Is that what you're saying? I know that was a lot of words.
Inside the building, between the existing office space that runs along Fourth Street and the historic theater area, which, you know, the back of it is on William Street. There's an interior courtyard area. It has open air, there's existing HVAC systems there. And, uh, that's probably the game plan, so punch through and connect there.
Are we adding more rooftop units to accommodate this new space?
Uh, no, the rooftop units are talking about beyond the assembly hall roof. Uh, and so Chris is right about how it's being drawn in. And then I just want to clarify your comment on Chippewa. Chippewa doesn't actually have a say in anything that goes on inside of the building because we're not actually applying for historic tax credits. So they more just give you the blessing of, we like the concept. But, um, if you wanted to go nuts in there and just tear the whole theater down, Chippewa actually doesn't have a say in it at this point. Um, obviously we're not, but there's no, we don't need to meet any historical integrity issues inside the building.
So the way this would work, that it would be reversible though still?
Yeah, absolutely, hundred percent. Yeah, it's sitting on the roof of the assembly hall. So if you took the assembly hall down, you would take it all out.
So if you're punching through the wall, would you just have to replace, what's that, a couple of bricks?
Yeah, a couple of bricks. And as Chris said, there's a courtyard interior between, um, the existing office building and then where the theater starts. There's an exterior courtyard right there that you run through.
Alright, so the electrical system's coming from the existing?
Yes, correct.
Are we adding in a new service to that?
I think they're, I think they're strengthening it, but I am not a electrician.
Alright.
I'm never comf, I'm never confident on electrical.
That's alright.
I know they're plugs.
Take a fill in that gap.
Yeah.
So we're upgrading the service coming into the building?
Yeah.
And then you're gonna, you're gonna put in a new section of the service to feed over that way?
You got it.
Is there anything that you would be concerned about of like, do we have to knock down any walls to do that?
No.
Or we're just gonna run it?
Nope. Yeah, just.
Alright. And then if we go back, I think it's another slide or two. I'm sorry. One more? One more? That one. Is the corridor, and I can't read that one because it's yellow and white.
Large conference room.
Is that on top of the stage?
Uh, yes, uh, where the stage currently is, yeah.
So how would we be, are we doing the same foam and concrete there?
Yeah, everything will be run right, everything will be run straight through. Um, so the stage is actually very compromised at this point. So the stage will come out, the whole stage, you take it out if you were doing anything here. So it comes out and you level it.
So when the stage comes out, we will be able to put foam down? And if anyone ever came to want to put in the stage, the existing stage would still be, the guts of it would still be?
Yes, everything's still up, yup, the back of the house.
So it would just be laying down some wood flooring?
Yup, yup.
Alright. And then are we knocking down any of the archways or any of the?
No.
No? Alright. Are we knocking down anything in the building?
Uh, the only thing that is, that I would say is coming down is the curtain, um, which is long past its useful life.
Yeah, that would look to me pretty old.
Beautiful, but it's, uh, you know, it's got fifty years to decay in it.
Can you say restoring it?
We're storing it.
You're restoring it?
It's not getting restored.
Oh, you're restoring it? Yeah, yeah, storing it.
At the request of Chippewa, it will be stored. It will be restored, it'll be stored.
Is there a reason we're not applying for Chippewa credits?
Yeah. Um, you would have to, you'd have to go in and basically restore the entire theater. So as a municipality, you could, you could find a loop around getting, because you need to be a for-profit to access the tax credits, but you'd be up in the, be back up in that sixty million dollar range that I was talking about.
So it would increase from the, not to seat eleven and a half to at least thirty?
It would, it would, well more than thirty, yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have more questions. Sorry, thank you.
Good. Maria, uh, we'll go back to, um, Jeff, don't go anywhere, please. And the letter, uh, Corporation Council Morrissey has informed me during your emails, uh, the Chippewa. Okay? Um, as you can see, just another example. And when we get to the floor plans, we'll talk to you about, um, how we thought about that. Um, let's move on real quickly if anyone didn't have questions on the prior slide. We're gonna talk, uh, meat and guts right now about the financial. Take it away.
Thanks, Mary. I did just, before I move forward, I did just wanna, uh, bring up two things that have been brought up here. Um, you know, one, I know some folks have requested that, uh, current duly-elected council members abdicate this to a future council. I think that's in complete disregard to the residents and voters that put you here, uh, with the beginning of your term. So I do want to make that point clear as well. And, uh, just another one I want to make clear too, um, because, you know, it was said, a comment about the usuals that come here, um, you know, and the, the handful of folks that do, uh, come here and speak negative, pretty much anything that the administration does. I do want to be clear, I three hundred percent support your right to come here. Every meeting we ever have, saying everything we're doing, that's your right. I'll always support that no matter what. And I just want that to be clear. That's our First Amendment, just like I have a First Amendment right to say how I feel as well. But, um, I did just want to point those two things out before we move on. So, um, you know, like we've been talking about this project for all along here, the eighteen months or so that, that it's been going on. Um, there is a lot of benefits to this, doing it through the LDC, taking advantage of that tax-exempt financing, bonding through the LDC. Um, as already been noted plenty of times here, that there's space for community meetings and events. Uh, in the future, what does a benefit here, um, and this is stuff that we talked about early on. Um, there's no hard numbers to it because we're not there necessarily yet, is that the LDC can throw different equity contributions into this eventually with the sale of parcels on the, uh, South Troy Industrial Road section of the city on the river. Uh, those are things that the LDC can commit, be committed to, to help, uh, this project to continue to lower, uh, the responsibility of the taxpayer for its annual payment for its, uh, home of local government. Again, that's not reflected here because that's not real yet. That might not be real for another year or two, uh, but that is still something that, uh, will ultimately end up happening. Um, again, uh, the mayor's referred to it often. This is, this is going to have an economic development impact on the Fourth Street corridor. This is what the LDC's mission is. It's to take trouble. It's to take troubled parcels, troubled buildings, turn them into something that has an economic development factor, turn them into something that can be used for public good. And that's exactly what the LDC is going to be doing here on this. I do also, another thing just to note out as well, Maria, you can probably go to the next slide if you don't mind. And here we are on the first floor of the new permanent City Hall. So we're working with this, with the Columbia and BBL team, the developer and the construction team. I do also want to point out on the city and LDC end, we've been utilizing advisors and consultants that have been working with the city on their bonding for 20-plus years. They're involved in every step of this project. The LDC also did hire a third party to be an owner's rep, an architect firm, H2M, that's right in this building. They have been with us every step of the way. Their VP, Dave Patrigo, which is a great guy, he's been with us every step of the way, has actually helped us trim some costs off this project. So again, I know we talked about it earlier, I try to recall as much information as I can. Once we start getting into foam basements and cement, I get a little lost, but that's why we hired an architect that does know all of that. So, you know, this has been guided along by other folks, third-party consultants that are familiar with the city, they're bond professionals that handle these types of transactions across the whole entire state, bond counsel as well through the LDC. So I did want to point that out. And again, I know that some folks have also mentioned that they don't think that this is good for historic preservation, they don't feel that we can do it for this amount of money. They think the amount of money we're spending is too much, it's a little bit all over the place. But I did just want to point out, you know, some Columbia development projects over the years, the Renaissance Albany Hotel out in Albany, it won a Preservation League of New York State Excellence and Preservation Award in 2015. Wellington Road, another Historic Albany Foundation Award. Proctor's Theater in Troy, which again, I think the pictures show this office building was basically nothing when they came through, restored it, still made some historical elements intact, redid the whole facade of the building, otherwise that would not be what we see here right now. The Chazen Building, that's right next door. So we are not dealing with a fly-by-night developer or construction company. This is Columbia and BBL. They have a long track record of huge developments, big projects, Plug Power, Six Wellness Way, that aren't historic, great big projects. You know, this is not somebody that's never been around before, that doesn't have the experience for this exact type of construction and renovation. So I did want to make that, make that clear as well. Back to what you see in front of you right now. So this is the first floor, this is the most up-to-date floor plan here. You might notice a little change from some of the other diagrams that you've seen, but one of the benefits of new permanent City Hall here at Proctor's is that you're going to get about 90, 95% of the services, most folks come to City Hall for every day, right on the first floor. So their birth certificates, their marriage license, to pay their water bill, their tax bill, to go to the assessor's office, all those offices are located right on the first floor. So you can also, you can very easily enter through the historic lobby, which you can see on the north end of the Fourth Street diagram. You can make your way through here to access all of these services, like I said, the treasurer's office, assessor's office. There's also a wheelchair accessible, handicap accessible entrance right on the other end of it. So we're going to have ample handicap parking also on the Fourth Street portion of the building as well. You can really enter with ease, where now you are parking in a parking lot, you are crossing River Street, you are coming up a pretty long ramp, you're coming into the lobby, you're getting on the elevator, you're coming up to the fifth floor, and you're wheeling around to two different wings of the building. Council members and folks here should be familiar, the clerk's office, Vital Statistics, all the offices says, if you're here for this, go turn around and go here. People get very confused on the floor. So, you know, this is bringing everybody to one stop. You could go right over to Vital Statistics, and of course, the clerk's office has to have a close proximity to the Assembly Hall where the council meetings will be held. And then you'd get right here to this entrance and exit that will have a ramp that we discussed. This is where you saw the awning that would get you into the parking, the parking garage there too. So for the folks in the audience, and this is the area I'm talking about right here. Again, look, a lot of folks showed up tonight to talk, to support, to not support this. They're spilling out into the hallway, they still are. This is not a suitable chamber for, again, like I said, I might not agree with everything everybody comes here and says every single time, they have the right to do it. We have a vigorous community that is very active. They deserve a space to come and talk about these crucial issues, one that's safe for them, one that's accessible, and they're not spilling out into a hallway. So it was mentioned as well that, you know, square foot to square foot, some of the spaces we could be, the active spaces, we might be losing a little bit, like the mayor noted. That's due to it not being efficient. There's conference rooms on these floors that don't get used, except for maybe a pizza party. There is, you know, there's wide open spaces with no desks, no need for that. You pretty much run into a dead zone when you come to this end of the hallway, no use of space at all to exit there. So, and we're talking about maybe a difference of, you know, a couple, even if it's 1,000 or 2,000 square foot. What the community gains is now a twice as big Assembly Hall that can host community meetings, can host council meetings, other various get-togethers. They're gaining the historic hall or arcade that can also be blocked off, simply used for, you know, kids come to visit City Hall, or folks want to do a history event. You know, coming in through the historic lobby, that can be something that is a very point of ease to be shown, okay, you can go to this part of the building or not. It will serve a lot of, a lot of great causes there. So we are gaining the spaces that the public would be utilizing the most, that is where the gain is. And again, it will have great use of ease with the multiple entrances. Up here, you go to the existing office space. Again, a lot of misnomers out there too about, this is, the costs are going to skyrocket, it's impossible to do this, and how are we going to fix up the whole entire theater? And how, how are we going to do that? And what folks have to understand is that there is four floors that have already had a lot of renovation. They have to be reprogrammed, they have to be freshened up, paint, carpet, things like that. There's some walls that have to come down and get added on the interior of them. We're also making it so, the courtyard was mentioned as well, this wise staff, you know, we wanted to make sure that everybody has sunlight when they're working, that they're not just in this dark space with no windows, kind of like the one we're in right now. So, you know, this, again, this opens up everything, a great positive for our staff is that, you know, they're not going to have to go from multiple floor to multiple floor to use a break room. This current floor that serves, you know, 70 to 80 folks, right now, on top of the visitors and taxpayers that come here often, there is two restrooms for the whole entire place. You can see currently one of the conditions, if you went into the men's room here. So, you know, each floor has two restrooms. There's a mother's room, there's a gender-neutral room, there's all the type of bathrooms that should be suitable for this type of work staff. So I know, again, it was noted about the elevator, traffic up and down the elevator. Folks are pretty much going to be using the elevator when they come into the building and when they leave. There's also stairways that are dedicated for staff. So if the building department needs to run up quick to talk to, talk to somebody in engineering or planning, I'm sorry, vice versa, very simple use of ease there. So, you know, that's, that's kind of some points that I want to make about losing, losing the space, that it's really not, we're gaining it. And again, when we talk about the cost of this total project, seeing that we already have a pretty sound second, third, fourth, and fifth floor, you know, that's another huge positive of this project as well.
Story.
Council President.
House member there.
Has a comparison been made between the spaces, I mean, I see all the shading, and I tried to do, I tried to review the plans myself, but it was difficult with the PDF. Has any comparison been made between the size, the area that departments currently have and what's being proposed?
Yes, I want to say that is the next slide.
It is.
No, I mean by department. I mean, it would appear to me, based on the floor plans, that some of these departments are losing, you know, some maybe 10%, some 20%, some departments, it appears their space is being cut in half. Do you have any data on that?
This was, and Chris kind of, Chris went through this too, so we can discuss it. We do have another version that does break it down a little bit more by department, down by desks. Again, throughout the process that we've been going through, the whole group, not only the City of Troy and LDC Working Group, but the developer and the construction company, we've done multiple tours of the entire floor. We're making sure that everybody's space is fit to standard sizes as well. So you could be pointing to, again, you know, we have some folks here that we all know, like mentioned earlier, when we came to this space, it was never meant to be permanent. So, you know, some cubicles might be three times the size as somebody else's. That's, that's not, you know, that's not really the way to operate. Everybody's going to have an equal amount of sized spaces to work in. There's also ways to relook at different things too, say the code department. They're basically in here to do paperwork, do things like that briefly. We want them out in the streets doing what they do best, you know? So you can see in the floor plan, when you can go a little bit closer, they're set up in a little bit more of a bullpen-type area.
Yeah, now that I've had a chance to take a look at this, I guess this sort of summarizes what, what I was saying. So you're reducing total workspace area by about 18% and you're increasing the number of workers that you have. So overall, this is less space for the actual workforce themselves, right?
Again, correct, because you're comparing, you're comparing it to an inefficient.
You have a hallway, you have some big spaces that add to the overall, to get to that, you know, I guess you're saying 45,000, I don't see where 45,000 is coming from. The existing building is 20, and you're only creating about 10,000 square feet in the theater. So I don't see where you're getting 45,000 of overall space. Are you counting the basement area or something?
Total usable space.
The other room is for storage, let's freeze up.
So where's the, where's the other 15,000 square feet, is in the basement?
So I want to say also, I think the usable space is also accounting for the historic arcade and the lobby as well, I believe. And there is usable space in multiple different parts of the basement here. Under the theater, there is a very secure, dry basement, there's actually a sprinkled base, sprinkler basement under the office building portion of it as well, that can very well be used for storage. There's ample space for storage. If you do go back through the floor plans as well, there's storage spread around almost each floor too, whether it's for IT, Vital Statistics, clerk's office storage, that's all accounted for as well. But there is, there is more usable space in, in where we're moving to than compared to here. But yes, you, again, and, you know, you've, you worked here, you've seen this, so I mean, everybody's, it's not really equal to the way everybody's workspaces or the way things are set up. Totally understand that, you know, it was, had to be set up the way that it had to be. But this is more efficient and providing the heavier used areas ample space, like the front-facing services where residents come into, Assembly Hall, historic hallway, et cetera.
Yeah, I can see that, but it still does seem as though we're, we're trying to, you know, cram, cram the actual workforce into this compared to the space that we have now. I don't doubt that you have, you know, that, you know, these numbers are correct, although I, with the exception of that 45,000 until I, it was, that was not included on the floor plans that, that came out a week ago. You know, break room area is also being reduced. You know, bathrooms are being increased simply because instead of being on a single floor, the efficiencies that are gained from that, we're spreading people out over five floors. So you have to have, you know, you have to have that duplication of space to avoid having people have to use the elevator to use the restroom.
Well, and not only that, but I mean, that's, again, one of the benefits of having here, the bathrooms are there, that helps with, you know, not going from floor to floor, just like it helps easier not going from one wing to the other area.
Oh, yeah. You have to have them.
Same with the, same with the break rooms as well too, is that they might not be the same size, of course, of the existing two that are here, but that's because they're broken up amongst various floors, so they don't have to be as large. You know, that's another benefit as well, there's the courtyard too, that even, you know, the idea would be staff can go out there and eat lunch if they'd like to, there's the historic hall as well.
If I could just say another thing, if you notice, government is being looked at differently when you look how people actually work. If you go to DEC right now, you're not looking at cubicles, you're looking at more open space. So you are seeing more employees so they can converse. One of the things also that Seamus mentioned, the fact that departments, you know, we felt very strongly when we came in, the coordinate, coordinate, coordination and communication was not happening between departments. This will encourage planning, code, to communicate more. This will get Vital Statistics, clerk, treasurer, all on one floor. So we really look at the way government operates to ensure that that communication also happens. And you're not going to see, like here right now, folks, you know, you have BIS over in like a closet with no window, and then you have two people across the hall, you have people spread out, you have code, which, you know, is a mess right now, not being utilized in terms of all that space. You have engineering, when we came in, there was one person in the office, one person out in the field, you know, you worked there, there are tons of space not utilized, the conference room wasn't utilized in there. So we are looking at just different spaces, how government is thinking differently.
The plan does appear to show cubicles.
But not as many.
Oh, not as many?
No, there is, and going back to that again too, to the mayor's point, when you're talking about departments, that you want your code officials to be communicating with one another, you know, things like that, I believe is the reference. But no, of course, there's also cubicles, there's also regular offices with walls, there is multiple different forms of that here.
Yeah, you guys, we can, we can move on, but I appreciate the explanation.
Okay, so leading into this graph here too, again, let's just, just put this out there. I know a lot has been talked about that this graph, this is a, is supposed to give a simple picture, this is not supposed to be a, a in-depth breakdown of everything that we're talking about. It's a simple picture to show the difference between the fixed costs, the fixed obligated cost, between where we are now on city floor and where we will be at the new permanent City Hall. Okay? So I don't, everybody that disputes this, I don't, frankly, I just don't understand it, because here's a couple of background on it, all right? So just like when we go to bond for things, just like everybody here, if you have an auto loan, a car loan or anything like that, you go and you take, you purchase, you have a face value amount, a par amount, a principal amount, that you go and you finance it, and there's interest incorporated on it. And then you pay a fixed amount for a term. This is no different than that, except it's tax-exempt municipal bonding. There is no difference. I just, I want to make sure that this is absolutely clear. Another thing, because hearing this tonight as well, once the council, if the council approves this lease, that is the payment that we're beholden to. There is no trickery that can happen after, there is no bait and switch. Suggesting that is just a lack of knowledge of how contracts work. You can't really get out of that after it. And the reason that there's a do not exceed amount is because we're being upfront with how the bond mark, how the bond market works. And just to go into that a little bit before I break some of this down. So again, we've been working with bond professionals that, from KeyBank to our existing consultants, a lot of folks that do this every single day. And I appreciate everybody's opinion, but these people do this for a living every single day. And they're running various different models, what's the market doing? Did the Fed come down? All these different things, we're constantly getting updated. This, the 675 number could actually be lower than what this is. The 675 is the most reasonable target, considering what's going on in the market and what these bond professionals that do this every day have relayed to us. We put that maximum cost amount in there as a cushion, just in case that it does go up a little bit. But in nowhere in this 30 years can all of a sudden, 10 years from now, it skyrocket to be, we owe a million. That's not how contracts work, that's not how this specific lease works, that's not how the bond market works. That's just not how all of this works. Again, there'll be a slide that we get to here that will show, in our contract, in our current lease agreement, there is a 3% escalator year after year. That rate will increase. And even just to be fair with some folks that might say, well, maybe 10 years from now you could renegotiate that. Maybe you could go and there's another private developer out there that Maybe you could go and there's another private developer out there that would let you lease that space, and maybe it wouldn't be as much. That's the difference between what we're, the deal that we're working on now versus that. Because I think that everybody should prefer operating with a, operating a lease with a board affiliated with the city. This is an arm of the city, the Troy LDC is an arm of the city. Its goal, its interest is in the best of the city of Troy. This is not a corporation, this is not a private developer, which rightfully so, is profit-driven, which of course, good for them, they're profit-driven. There's never going to be a lease or an agreement that the city could enter into that would not have some type of escalation, that would not see this over time. This is an opportunity to provide that the city of Troy for the next 30 years can have a fixed amount that it can budget. We're going through budget season now, we talk about escalating pension costs, we talk about escalating healthcare. All these things are going to continue to happen. This is a way to mitigate that and try to keep more money in the coffers of the city, saving the taxpayers the money that they do deserve. And I know also that it was brought up here throughout the night that, well, why don't we build new? Why don't we build new? Well, if you don't really like the price of this, or you think that the price of this is going to exceed, you should really see what new construction is gonna cost. It would be triple if not no more to get a brand-new building. If there was a way to make financial sense of getting a brand-new building, that would have been something that we considered. We had a plethora of options, like have been discussed and shared with the public on that RFP proposal. And it, this is the one that has the most cost benefits and likes been listed already, so I won't go on. A lot of the other benefits that we talked about.
Well, remember Vera would like to ask a question.
Yes, council member.
Yeah, I think the issue with this, this, this graph isn't necessarily, it's, you know, obviously it's simplistic and it's trying to communicate, you know, a specific point of view. What I think is disingenuous about it is the idea that the costs for the current city hall are going to continue to escalate. Because if you recall back in 2012, when the lease was originally signed for this space, I think it was a 10-year lease, it expired, I want to say September of '22, that original lease agreement did not have an escalator clause then. The city paid the same amount of rent for this space for a decade. It wasn't until this administration came in and renegotiated the lease, a short-term lease, that the escalator clause was put in. It also wasn't until then that CAM charges escalated. Those are both things that this administration negotiated into the short-term lease. Now, I'm not saying it might have been, that might have been the only way to negotiate the short-term lease, but that wasn't effective of negotiating a short-term lease. The, the, that's, so that's the issue I have with the red line, to assume that you're, and you're also escalating, you're escalating not just the base rent, you're escalating CAM at 3%, which CAM.
1%, frankly.
Well, CAM can go up or down, it depends. CAM is, is not, I think in your memo to us, you said CAM is a estimated charge. It's not estimated, it's actual. They have to provide you, First Columbia every year provides a statement to back up CAM. It is actual costs incurred, not, not some, you know, estimate they make. And I, if I'm not mistaken, the red line also includes utilities. The green is only showing the 675, which is just the base rent. The, this is a triple-net lease, and there's language in here that says the city shall maintain and repair the facility. So the idea that you're not gonna see a spike of a million dollars assumes you don't have repairs or maintenance to the building that amounts to that. Otherwise, whatever the repairs and maintenance on the building are, would be added to that. It also doesn't include utilities, although it says it does at the bottom there.
If I can, council member, may I, so just to address a couple of those things. So I think it's pretty well-known that those first, those first years you referenced of the city being here was, again, it was never foreseen, and if you talked to First Columbia, it was, they were helping the city to come here, almost temporary. That's why that agreement was flat. It was never anticipated that we were gonna stay here forever and ever. Then as it got closer, under the previous administration, which the lease actually expired under, what was going on was there was kind of a handshake deal between the owner and the previous administration. And what they would do is they'd actually bill the city a higher amount, it would get crossed out and initialled by the former deputy mayor, and then they'd pay the lower amount in hopes that there was still a chance the city would stay here. Would you agree, just to work through this, would most triple-net leases, commercial leases, whether it's a city or private, would they come with escalation in it across, take this building out of it? The answer is yes, they don't stay flat, there's no private developer that gives a flat. Because council president, like I just referenced, if you wouldn't mind, let me finish my thought, but I'll address what you said, is that yes, because this is a unique arrangement. We are in a triple-net lease, we are responsible for our maintenance, we're entering it in with a city-affiliated board organization that sole interest is to give benefit to the city. Anywhere else, any building in the city of Troy, Latham, anywhere, triple-net, they are going to have escal. That is a very common real estate practice. Again, I mean, if I gotta tag Jeff Buehl in, again, I will, he's done plenty of these. So that should just address your point that this administration came into office actually out of a lease, and we had to negotiate again. It became pretty clear, because like it's been noted, the mayor, since she was city council president, has been touting wanting to get a permanent city hall. Again, like I've said before, she was then overwhelmingly elected, it was one of her top three promises, and First Columbia realized, we were going to probably look to get out of here. So of course, they're going to not do the handshake deal, cross out a certain number anymore. So that should address that part of it there as well. And again, I acknowledge that is there different, you know, leases, different structures that could be negotiated here, anywhere else. But anywhere they're going to be, it's gonna continue to escalate in the favor of the property owner, rightfully so, because they're in this to make money. They're not here to help the city of Troy necessarily, they're here to make, to make money. Also, going back to that CAM charges increased under our administration, again, that's false. They did increase because that was part of the handshake agreement that was going on before. They are now to reflect what everybody else, or the percentage everybody else plays by square footage. And, and again, I agree with you, I 100% acknowledge and know, we pay an estimated of CAM charges monthly here, and then we reconcile that then to here when it's real cost incurred. But these are just some things that make up that, that the 14.29% that we paid towards here, okay? So electric for the whole entire building, parking lot electric, gas, generator expenses, water and sewer. We're the city, we shouldn't have to pay that. Repairs and maintenance, unknown what exactly what that is, it's various general. Insurance, auto insurance, management fees, signage, property taxes for the parking lot. $115,000 a year we split up for snow plowing, landscaping, irrigation system, waste removal, HVAC maintenance and repair. And again, that's just for the whole building. We, last year, we paid almost $50,000 to fix the HVAC system that feeds this area and the controller's office. I, pardon me, council president, I'm answering the council member's question. If you would, please do me the respect and let me finish. IAQ testing, janitorial services, I love your posse always does that. Elevator maintenance and repair, security and fire monitors, swipe cards, telephone service, window cleaning, parking lot cleaning, asphalt repairs, pest control, fire extingu, uh, maintenance, parking lot, again, fleet fuel, vehicle R and M, uniforms, security payroll, payroll taxes and processing fees, parking lot permits. I think I'm making my point pretty clear.
I think you're making my point, those are all things that we're being responsible for in this new building.
Council member, okay, but stop being silly, stop, hold on, I'll let the giggles go, let the giggles go, I know, I know. But so what, here's, here, are we, what, what will we, what is the city of Troy gonna pay to snow plow? Are we gonna pay 15% of 115? We already do, Aaron, I mean, come on.
If our workforce has a set amount of work today and you add more work to it, that's cost money.
Yes, they're already out there doing it, they can completely manage. They already plow, they already do that, okay, but again, we have control. And let me, please, if you let me finish, I actually want to answer your question, if you're, if you even care about the answer, is what I'm saying here as well, is that, I love when I get interrupted, it's not a big deal, but anyways. So, and it's okay, it's okay, we want to work through this. So, you know, actual maintenance, that is, yes, you know, a door handle might break, things might happen. And then in future years, larger things may occur. We would, might have to deal with an elevator being fixed, you know, 15, 20 years from now, a roof being fixed, you know? But the current things, the current property owner right now spent somewhere around $28,000 in maintenance. The reason it's not reflected on here is that is not a fixed cost. We have to pay the CAM charges, estimates that then become actual, but that does not affect the actual maintenance here. I guess my point I'm trying to make is if I was being fair, I should have done a chart that showed, hey, we've spent $50,000 here also on HVAC. That is a number that fluctuates greatly, the actual cost. And that's why we wanted to be as transparent as possible in showing what the actual fixed costs are, to address some of the other things. We are contractually obligated to pay an $85,000 portion of the pilot here every single year. We clearly will not have that burden when we go over to the new permanent city hall. We have to pay $60,000 or so roughly a year in utilities. Of course, we're playing, gonna be paying utilities at the new city hall, but that's a shared amount. One, the bill doesn't come in our name, we don't have as much control of it, and we know that we've talked about these credits from National Grid. We're not allowed to apply those like we are to other facilities, because the bill, quite frankly, is not in our name. So that reflects this, National Grid has told us we'd be able to utilize those credits now that we are actually having those utilities in our names.
Right, but you're just moving the credits from where you use them now to another.
No, but like we talked about, that's not.
Is the next graph, is the next graph like an estimate of these, these costs or no?
I would, I really do want to answer your questions, but I would appreciate if you don't interrupt me, because I'm doing you the same courtesy, council member. What I'm trying is those credits, like we've said at budget hearings and you've heard now for the past two years of being on here, there's a plethora of credits. They are a little, they're tough to figure out where to exactly place them, but it's been confirmed that that is one of the places they can be. So that, I just wanted to finish that though, please. And just to go, again, just so some folks here that actually love to be, in, you know, the first year, again, once you get into 2027, going off this year, saving $112,000 a year, 2033, $213,000 a year, 2043, $422 a year. I guess the question that I have for the folks that don't see the financial savings in this, what, let's just go to 2043, okay? It's not that far away. So 2043, we could even do 2033. What type of expense could we foresee the city incurring in a building? By the way, that's getting a brand-new roof, that by the way, is getting a new HVAC system like we just, you know, went out, went over. Uh, the parts of it that already have existing HVAC are not even 10 years old, the elevator's not even 10 years old. All stuff that will be expected, certified before we go in there. I just, what is that unforeseen? Is, are we going to, when you add up these numbers, even just using a simple average of $200,000 a year of savings, which frankly, this chart, our numbers, the escalation, but just to simplify it for everybody, for it to make more sense to you, $200,000 on average for the next 30 years, even if you just can appreciate that, which the number's still low, you're talking about six-plus million dollars over 30 years of savings. We're not gonna get savings in the, in this place, or in a future other situation where we were to spend $30,000, $1 million to build, or, you know? And I know some folks said, well, this isn't transparent because it doesn't show interest. Of course it shows interest, again, I made that point earlier. Interest is part of bonding. If we went to go build a new city hall for $30 million, well, yeah, we'd probably be paying back almost a $60 million note. That's how bonding works. So we would not see those savings there. This deal, no matter what folks want to say, this is a savings deal. I know that people keep talking about, there's a lack of transparency, it's been 18 months we've been going at this, we've broke it down as much as we possibly can, still want to, because it's savings and it's good for the taxpayer and resident of the city of Troy.
So, so, yeah, I, I agree with you that the, the green line, the green bars, it includes the, it's essentially the mortgage. But anyone who owns a home knows that the cost of owning a home is not just the mortgage. And so there's insurance, there's, there's, again, you've listed basically all of them, all of the, all of the costs, but there's no estimate on what those would be.
Again, and you're, councilman Vera, you, you know better. So the insurance here, the insurance here, the insurance here, now the gavel comes out. The insurance, so listen, the insurance is towards the developer that owns this building's insurance. I mean, that's a contribute, we're paying towards a larger insurance policy. The city of Troy still has the insurance, I understand what you're saying. I know, again, some folks said, I own an old home, I know how it is when things go wrong. Okay, I understand that too. I'd like to go with Columbia and BBL that have done this over and over again. Nobody here, to be straight, nobody here is, is ever saying that there's not going to be other maintenance costs associated with this, just like our current city floor. We still have insurance as the city of Troy, that's not reflected in what we have currently. That we have to, that gets, I mean, we'd have anyways, but that they obligate to show, okay, their additional shirt, they're proved on that part of it. These are all things that is reflecting purely fixed costs, just like as a homeowner, as you would acknowledge. I'm sure some year, something comes up, there's that year, your roof has an issue or something, and then you call, you spend more that year. Nobody's not acknowledging maintenance will occur. But I think it's pretty clear that the amount of maintenance that may occur is completely eclipsed by the fat, the savings that you get over 30 years. That's just a fact.
Council president's deal.
Council member McLaren has to speak next. Okay, we'll move on to council member Case.
I just want to point out, I, I just think if we, if we have maintenance or repairs to be done, of course, sometimes we'd have to use contractors. But I think it's pretty obvious if we can get some of our workforce to do the repairs in-house, of course, those repairs are gonna be cheaper. I do want to point out, I have a friend who owned a big plot of land up on Huzick Street, and he cleared it all out and rented to some big corporations, and they all committed to 30-year leases. And he said, yeah, it's a lot of money right now, but in 30 years, they're paying you pennies. And that's what I think when you talk about cost here, this $675,000 in 30 years is going to be nothing. We're gonna be paying the cheapest rent around. That is substantial savings. It's 675 now, but 30 years down the road, it's still 675. And 675 is gonna be a extremely cost-saving bargain for this city.
Do we have council member President?
Do you have how much we pay, or how much proctors pay utilities currently?
Somewhere around a little under $50,000 a year.
How much do we pay utilities here?
We pay around 60 or so thousand dollars a year.
So when we add the box and the box and the box, it would be probably about the same?
You could, and actually, I think that they were paying a little closer to 40, and then getting closer to 50 was estimating the box and the box, but I recall a difference of kind of gaming out 60, 50 versus 60.
Have you priced out insurance for proctors?
So yes, the LDC is gearing up to have insurance, a builder's risk policy, and in the future, the LDC will actually also carry the insurance as the property owner. And, you know, currently, we're probably looking at an estimate of that to be, it could be anywhere from 15 to maybe $20,000 a year. That is a tab that the LDC will end up picking up.
How much is the insurance here?
Our, well, so it's part of our whole entire, again, the, the insurance that's on the CAM charges is different than what we pay. The city as a whole has a total policy, and, you know, our liability just spreads to here. Yearly, our policy is $750,000. So again, for us, for the, the city of Troy, it will be as simple as, we're not here anymore, we're over there. It's still part of one big massive liability policy.
You can go ahead, Cas, I'm gonna circle back.
Council member Vera?
Thank you, council president. The base rent is a triple-net figure, and in addition to the base rent, the city shall be responsible to pay taxes, utilities, insurance, maintenance and repairs, all are set forth in this lease agreement. What do you mean when you say the LDC is gonna be paying the insurance?
Okay, so again, and that's put in there because that is a standard triple-net lease. Of course, the city of Troy does not have to pay taxes. The only reason it has to pay them here is because it's part of a pilot. When I say that the LDC is going to be paying insurance, is that the LDC has decided as part of one of their many future contributions to this, that we will pay the insurance as the property owner, not the city of Troy's regular policy that we have that building specifically, or we'll add it on to existing LDC insurance as well.
No, no, so, so what you're saying is the LDC will have the policy, and whatever that expense is, the city will pay as additional rent?
Nope, that is not what I said. Whatever that policy is, the LDC will pay it and will not relay that cost. And again, I just heard behind me someone whisper, prove it. So, I mean, so, but here's the thing.
I can't hear, he's talking so loud, I can't hear.
Can I make a motion to amend that we just strike taxes and insurance right out of the lease then?
So if I, one, I would have to, even if Justin Miller's here, again, that wording is very particular, that's stuff that the bond market looks for. That's stuff that the bond market looks for when you're talking about a triple, triple-net lease as well. And I mean, are we, again, that's something we're committed towards here too. We're talking about a potential fifteen-thousand-dollar-a-year cost that we're concerned about over, you know, upwards of eight-hundred thousand dollars in thirty years of savings. I just want to be clear, the comparison there.
So just for the sake of moving on with this, so we don't go home tomorrow, can we just say we're going to pay the fifteen thousand for all intents and purposes? And just, I know we're not going to, but let's just pretend we do.
If you, and I, you can go on with that, that's, if, for your rationale, that if I think I'm hearing your point is, is that we can say we're paying that fifteen thousand dollars a year and that the city of Troy, let's say if they were to have to, which is not the assumption at this point, you're still talking about night and day in savings when you talk about that fifteen thousand dollars being eaten up by a hundred-plus thousand, two-hundred, thirteen thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars. Again, that language is in there because it's specifically set for how your typical triple-net is, like we've been saying here. Always acknowledge paying the maintenance as well, that's always been part of it. The taxes is included in there, I think everybody could agree, we're not going to end up paying taxes to ourselves.
The lease puts it on the city, as Councilmember Vera said, to ultimately be responsible. But really what that means in arrangement is that whatever the LDC does not pay, then the city will pay. The lease, nothing in the lease prevents the LDC from picking up any charge on its own.
Council President.
Councilmember Vera.
Well, while you have a point, unrelated to the, the current discussion, uh, this lease does not include a square footage amount of what we're leasing. Is that, is that like open-ended? It depends on, do, do, we, we don't have any firm number on it? What, act, because these plans are admittedly conceptual, right? Uh, we, we have to go through a, you know, a, a, a big construction project in order to make this happen. There, we've said, we've held firm on a timeline and we've held firm on a dollar amount. So the only thing that can, can move, right, on this project is the scope of it. That would be how we, we meet the deadlines and things, but there's nothing in here that I saw about a guaranteed minimum amount of space that we would be leasing.
So we are leasing the entire structure.
Whatever that may be.
Whatever that may be.
Okay. And then the other one I had.
And the, and the square foot and things like that, there, there's also going to be a guaranteed maximum price construction contract, which will probably provide, I believe, provide more detail as to, you know.
Oh, but that, but that's between the LDC and the, and the developer.
Correct.
Correct, but we have input on it.
And I think it's worth, just to note too, that, that the scope of the project would not change. That's not, there's no scope of the project that would change, especially once you finalize that GMP as well.
I, I had a question, another question for Rick that I was about to ask.
You're back up.
Um, the, the, the contract also says that six-seventy-five isn't firm, that that could fluctuate. We've heard the deputy say that it could fluctuate in the downward direction, but then there was an amount in there, I think a maximum amount of, of six-eighty-five?
So we put in a, not to exceed six-eighty-five?
In, in the event, this is just hypothetical, but in the event that when the LDC goes to the bond market and for whatever reason, interest rates are higher, um, the credit score is different than the city's, whatever, whatever the case may be, if six-eighty-five doesn't cover the LDC's debt service, what happens to this lease agreement?
Then the developer has some hard choices to make.
I'm sorry, could you elaborate? What, what do you mean the developer has hard choices?
Well, I, I don't know if you'll accept the answer for me, I know you probably want it from this.
If, if, if it came back and it had to be six-ninety?
I, I mean, if, the, the maximum you're authorizing the city to do is six-eighty-five.
Okay.
Okay? We have a, a couple of bailout windows in that contract, uh, if we do not hit our mark. The developer is in control of the ultimate costs of the project and the, um, it could end up in a reduction in the rent if the developer shaves some costs. That's why I said the developer would have some hard choices to make.
And in the other?
But we're not, we're not going to pay more than six-eighty-five.
It's not covered.
And again, that was put in there as a protection for the city to give everybody comfort and understanding of exactly how that would work. We did put that in there. Like Rick noted, um, it, you know, there is multiple avenues to break out of the lease if that so is to happen. Um, and another thing to note with the square footage you will see in there, that it does reference, uh, the city Troy as the master tenant of, of the building. Just, uh, I think that's why you don't see the square footage, is just the point.
Yeah, the only reason I brought that up is because, again, these are conceptual, presumably when, uh, you progress these drawings to final design sometime before the end of the year or even during the construction process, you know? You know, coming in, hitting some unknown, uh, you know, parameter of the building or what have you. Um, there's nothing in here that protects the city, you know? You, you guys have done all of this programming, right? You, you need the thirty thousand square feet or forty-five thousand plus, whatever, whatever the total is, but there's nothing in here that guarantees that.
But I, that's, that's going back to my reference to that, we are the master tenant. If any other part of this were to be, say, subleased out, it would, one, have to be agreeable between the LDC and the city, and it would, two, also then have to get a bond council opinion as well. So there's no opportunity, I, if I think I understand the, your question, the way you're going with it is, we're not, it's not like that a year from now, we can all of a sudden say, okay, we're actually putting, uh, another tenant over in this part of the building, I.
With, with all due respect, I don't think you understand my question, and I don't, I, I truly, with all due respect, what, what I'm suggesting is if you, you, you've set a budget of eleven-and-a-half million dollars to build something similar to the concept plans we have, if for any reason, when you go through, when you finish the design on this, costs have escalated and this council chamber has to be smaller, right? In order to hit that target price, there's nothing in here that sets a, a lower limit, right? So if, if after all of this, for some reason, you know, costs just balloon, right? Again, I'm, I'm, a corner case admittedly, but there's nothing in here that, that, that guarantees the city an amount of usable space.
You're coming from the space to make sure that what you see, although conceptual, and that the product we get is as close to as what you're currently seeing. So I would say that that would definitely be addressed through the GMP, through the construction, through the construction agreement in there as well.
The city's not a party to that contract, correct?
Again, that's, the LDC is, which is an arm of the city and has the city's best interest as well, but. No, there's not a world that, um, if several weeks from now, uh, costs balloon to higher where, where, uh, where it's completely unforeseen, that are we going to all of a sudden say, you know what? Don't, we won't have an assembly hall here, let's do it. That would affect the total project and unfortunately, it would be something we'd walk away from. Because, again, that's why we put the do not exceed when it comes to the dollar amount in there as well. Because, you know, we want the finished product that's going to be the best for the city as possible, that's the goal. Nobody wants to, especially, nobody wants to rush through this, like it's been said, and get to this point to have a, uh, city hall space that nobody's proud of. And I understand that you're doing your diligence with asking the question, um, but, you know, again, that's why that, that do not exceed amount is there too. And you'll also see when we're talking about the total amount of cost of the project, it was authorized around eleven, uh, point five million dollars. The project is down to somewhere around eleven-point-one or so right now. That's, again, going to working, uh, working hard, a little bit of negotiation, a little bit of, uh, using our, our owner's rep architect going through, making sure we're using the most efficient space of it. We've really put a lot of effort over the past several months, um, you know, the mayor, myself, Chris Marini, our city engineer, Joe Mazarel, General Services, Omaid, uh, the Columbia team, the BBL team, H2M, really making sure that there's things in here that we need. We've fought for different things to make sure they're in here in our scope. We've added to the scope. You know, we've really held them to the fire on a lot of those generators, fire safety, AV equipment, making sure that our IT can be set up for whatever's, you know, advances are to come, ten, twenty years from now. Those are all things that we've been aware of. This is not, this is a project we're taking a lot of pride in because we, we do foresee what great benefit it has for the city of Troy. So we're not trying to do it to, uh, cut anything out of it or anything. I understand the point you're making, but I do just want to say, that's the LDC's mission here too. You know, that's a board, again, that's here for the benefit of the city of Troy. That's our mission too, not to, not to pull things away.
Could we, if there's no other questions, proceed to the next slide, please.
We can agree there, Council President. This is, so I, I do think this was covered. This is just to point out exactly where you can see the three percent increase that we keep talking about in the current city hall lease. Um, again, I think we've kind of hashed, hashed that part of it out if you want to go to the next slide. Uh, we've kind of pretty much talked about this as well too. This is a diagram showing all of the different fees, um, that we have to pay portions of. I think we've discussed this pretty thoroughly as well. The point, again, of that is to make the, is to make it clear, there is a difference between the maintenance that every tenant, just like we are now, and the maintenance that we will be responsible for at the new. Those are the same, except here, we are, we have to pay for maintenance we may not take benefit of or maintenance that we may not need to do since we're the city. Again, snow plowing, water, sewer, are those, are those points as well. Um, and then on to this, this is a more up-to-date, um, cost, uh, cost, uh, estimate. Um, and as you can see here too, the, the total amount of the project that was approaching eleven-point-five million at one point is down to a little over eleven-point-one. You can see that the building acquisition cost has stayed the same at that one-point-eight number. Um, we did break out a couple other costs just to show everybody. Um, you know, you have your capitalized interest included in there too. That's pretty much the factor that's going to carry us while the construction's happening into making our first payment January of 2027. Uh, some legal costs, other finance costs, again, those bond professionals, all the folks I've been referencing, uh, tonight. And then you can see that we were hovering a little over eight, eight-point-one million in construction costs. That new update, uh, is the result of some negotiation. Uh, it also does have some other built-in factors for the city. Uh, we, the LDC and the city have a, uh, a contingency fund for if stuff does come up there that we're not seeing right now, that arises throughout construction, that, okay, we really should have two doors there, different things. Of course, the contractor has their own contingency for the unforeseen. They start building the assembly hall and there's something they don't anticipate they have to do. Again, that's the beauty of doing this through the LDC, is that there is that guaranteed maximum po, uh, price contract. And again, for the folks paying attention here, that, uh, through the city, we'd be dealing with, you know, a bitted project that would also have multiple, every, an electrician would be a separate bid, uh, a masonry would be a separate bid. Those are all different things, while not only combining this to make it the most efficient cost possible, they can't come in with change orders and different things. There's not going to be these large changes six months from now that nobody knows. It's a guaranteed maximum price, that's what they're beholden to, to get the job done and get it done, so that we're in there January first of 2027.
Council President. I see a couple people straining to see the TV, is this going to be online?
Oh, thank you for, Alex, Alex, we'll get mad, I didn't mention that. So yes, it is, it is online on the city website. It's prominently right on the front page. There is all the information from the original proposals, LOI, LDA, this lease is on there, um, this, uh, presentation is on there. Um, I think there's a couple other pieces of information as well, the current city lease. Everything that you'd want to know about this project is on that link, um, on our homepage here, uh, at the city of Troy, right on the landing page.
Councilmember McLaren. Um, how about the moving costs? Is that included in the soft costs?
So that, that's a great question, council member, that is not. Uh, if you do recall from budget time, we do have a, a capital plan set up in the capital plan part of the budget uh, for furniture, some IT and, uh, moving costs.
And are you confident that what was budgeted for moving costs will be enough?
We have day, we, the capital plan that we provided to all of you is a little bit of a, um, has a bit of a cushion. It did combine furniture, some IT and the moving all in one, so that if one's a little bit, you know, a little bit more, uh, cost-effective than the other. Of course, we had to wait for this to get approved here today before we start doing the process of, uh, going through the procurement process for movers, furniture, all of that.
Before we wrap it up, uh, before we go to the last slide, um, I cannot say enough about the team led by Seamus, Rick, Joe Maz, our financial advisors, bond councils, BBL, H2M, Joe Nicola, his team, Columbia Development. This has been hours upon hours upon hours. We're very confident in the numbers. This is not fly-by-night. We have worked on this for over eighteen months. We have consulted several times with our bond council, with financial advisors, obviously with Rick Morrissey, who has led the team. Chris Marini, thank you also. But let, honestly, the hours and hours that Seamus has poured into this cannot go understated. Thank you, Seamus, thank you. Next slide, you could stay up here if you want. Okay, uh, the next steps, um, some order, very important. Uh, next steps, um, Troy LDC, if this is to the heads, the LDC will act on the lease agreement. Um, then the LDC will finalize what Seamus talked about, the GMP, construction costs. LDC will go to the, uh, the bond market that obviously has been discussed multiple times prior to even go into the bond market. The LDC will close on those bonds. LDC will close on the property. Uh, construction will begin in December of 2026, or I'm sorry, 2025 this year. And we are confident and hopeful we will be in city hall 2027 of January. And as you heard tonight, um, we do have that cushion if it does last, uh, through February or March, um, through, uh, the settlement as mentioned earlier, if we did, uh, need time. And then just very, very quickly, um, we talk about, you know, just what this is about. This is about long-term, this is about, um, not just today, not just ten years from now. This is historic. This is a permanent home for city hall for decades to come. And like I said earlier, you cannot underestimate or just think about it, thirty, forty, fifty years from now, it's not about me, it's not about us. It's about the future and it's about Troy and it's about finding a permanent home. And as mentioned numerous times, this was to be temporary. This is not good enough for the people of Troy, it's not the way we should be conducting business. And it's not just about pride, it's about financial, it's about everything we talked about. I hope the council strongly considers, uh, passing this very, very important historic, uh, permanence at evolve for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still in discussion, uh, any council members wish to?
Council President's deal.
Councilmember Jason.
Thank you.
First of all, I, I, I do want to make some comments. I want to just respond to some of the public speakers here tonight. Talking about the mayor of this city, saying this project, and she's being reckless, nothing thought out, what she's doing is laughable. I think you just heard that, that there, there's a lot of details with that, but that was what was said. I just want to point out that this mayor actually ran a state agency. She oversaw major projects. And you're trying to say that what she's doing here, even though you heard it, is just completely laughable and reckless. And to hear people say, huh, oh, okay. And, and to hear people say that what happened Tuesday was a referendum, not only on the mayor, but on this project, is disingenuous. It's twisting the truth for your own narrative and you know it is. You could shake your head all you want. To be honest, let's be honest, if you're all the political wonks, approximately one year ago, there was an election and there was chaos in Washington and it was a bad, bad night for Democrats all across this country. Well, this come year, there's chaos in Washington. And what happened was there was a revolt against Republicans this year, just like happened a year ago. And it's not any reflection. I knocked on over five-hundred doors and talked to hundreds of people, okay? And I ran on a huge, a slate of numerous people and I'm around long enough to know plenty of Democrats and have friends with plenty of Democrats and nobody said to me, all I hear is complaint about that mayor Carmela Mantella and what she's doing or her city hall. I didn't hear it. Nobody heard it. Because she's doing a good job, this is a good project. Because she's doing a good job, and this is a good project, and you just heard all the facts. And like I said, this is, what happened Tuesday was no way a reflection on her. Look at the results. You had the worst candidate I've ever seen for county executive or any other office in my life run. Well, hold on, I will. I just want to point out because of their comments, I'm responding to their comments, and I'm going to respond to their comments, because these were the comments that they said. You had the worst candidate you ever saw, got 46% against a guy who was probably the best county executive in the state, and in North Greenbush, you had a guy who, thank God, lost, got 1,900 votes, who had sex with an 11-year-old. That's the kind of atmosphere we're in this year, okay? So this isn't a reflection on her. Now let's talk about that it's responding to what they said. It is. I'm responding exactly to what was said in front of all of us about the mayor.
No one brought up the other issues you were?
Yes, they did.
Out of line.
They talked about why it happened Tuesday, and why we lost, and why it was a reflection on the mayor, and I'm responding to that, and it's exactly what it is.
Stop your loss.
It's okay with me.
Please, let's let him finish.
Okay. Let's just say, let's talk about the City Hall proposal. At first, like many of us, this was not my, even on my radar. I thought ICC. I've always talked about, when you talked about, Aaron, a city hall, our own city hall that we built, and we said, oh, it's a bridge too far. I go, every other town and every other city in this country built a city hall, why can't we? I didn't get the Proctors thing. I didn't get the box in the box. I had major concerns, but it grew on me. Ryan, you looked at the infrastructure, said it was good. I didn't even know there was offices in there. I'm sorry, I lived in Troy all my life. I didn't know there was offices in there. Then Don Ritner, highly respected by me and this area for being a historian, said it was a good plan, and that made a lot to me, meant a lot to me, because I'm like a hit Troy history buff. I recently toured the Upper Burton Iron Works with three local historians that made my day, made my week. I care about Proctors. Hey, you talk about the viability of a theater. I understand that. People want to make it a theater. Listen, if somebody here won Powerball and built the theater, and redid it, wow, great. It wouldn't be viable. It would rob from Proctors, Palace, Gahoz Music Hall. It's just, it's an oversaturated market, and you heard that from Jeff Buell. I wish that was the case. But I also do want to point out something maybe nobody thought of is, we had lawsuits in this city concerning early voting and its location. Our location now for all of early voting in downtown Troy is tenuous. Every year, not only every year, every election, we're not sure where we're going to go next. This creates a scenario where we have a permanent early voting site with parking, accessibility, and everything, in our own City Hall, which I think is great. But I wanted to close by saying, you know, I've always been for a permanent City Hall. I think that this does do that. I've always been disappointed that we rented. You know, I have to say, I was proud to be hired to work for this city. I was proud to be elected a councilman, and I'm proud to support something like this. Somebody said something about legacy. And I think about my kids and my grandkids using this City Hall and seeing the historic Proctors. It's a City Hall, and it saved Proctors from a wrecking ball. And that means a lot to me, that it be saved, to not only, you know, find a home, a City Hall, but to save this historic theater. I think it's a wonderful thing. I think it's a well-thought-out plan. I think it's been explained as a well-thought plan, and in the end, it's going to save a lot of money, and we're going to be paying pennies per minute in the future. Thank you.
Shall we vote on it? We'll do a slow roll. Councilmember Keel.
Aye.
Councilmember Brosnan.
Aye.
Councilmember McLaren.
I just want to say that I am not against a permanent City Hall. I also have to appreciate the passion that I see in how much work you have done, and that you know this project backwards and forwards. You know, that does not go unnoticed.
I did miss the phone, I'm sorry.
What?
I missed the phone.
Oh, that's fine. That's okay. That's all right. Jeff was there to yell you. I don't know that I'm necessarily even against this project. I just don't, I'm uncomfortable. What am I trying to say? I know we need a permanent City Hall. I know that this place was never meant to be permanent, and I hope I'm wrong. I really do. I don't think there's any doubt that everybody here cares about Troy, and that's why they have a strong opinions that they do, even though they're differing. I hope I'm wrong, but right now for me, it's a no.
Councilmember Vera.
Yeah, I do appreciate the administration's presentation this evening, but I believe there are still flaws in this plan, and for that reason, I feel guilty.
Councilmember Sorrento.
I think... I actually appreciate all of the work that you've put into this, the specifics. I'm blown away with the presentation that you provided us with. We've needed a new home, a permanent home, for many years. I mean, we've left Monument Square, rented out the Verizon building, renting out this floor, and it's time for us to have a permanent home for City Hall. And I think this is, I mean, of course, there's going to be flaws. There's flaws in every move, every construction, there's always going to be flaws. You know, that's just the reality of it. But I think that this is going to be a great project, and yeah, I vote yes, and thank you so much for all the time that you spent on this.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
I want to thank all of the folks who spoke here tonight, for and against. You spoke from your heart. I want you to know we listened. That's why we're here, is to hear you and to take what you say to heart. I was particularly taken, and really honored, really, to have Jack Wade here in the chambers tonight, sharing his international knowledge and reputation with us. And I'm taking that to heart in particular. I have real concerns about this project, not only the cursory plans that we've been given, but what this is going to do to the historic structure. I want to clarify the record. The ship of letter does not commend the project in any way. It does not call it a model. And I also want to correct the mayor. I wrote in June, and every month since then, for information on this project, and never received the courtesy of a response. So please, don't say we have not asked questions, because we have asked lots of questions and gotten no answers. And that's at the heart of why I have to vote no on this, is we don't have any hard numbers. The slides that we saw tonight were very nice, and I want to thank you for putting that together. We should have had this weeks ago, not the night that we are being asked to approve a lease. If you had this information, it should have been shared with the council. And I don't understand why this whole process has been kept in the dark. Perhaps some of the members of the council were privy to this, but the entire council was not. And that's not the way to run a ballgame. I'm also concerned that we're not doing what the mayor asked of this body several years ago, when it was proposed that a long-term lease be considered here. She said, no, a new council is coming in, and we shouldn't saddle a new council with our decision. And I feel that strongly tonight. A new council is coming in January 1, and we should not be saddling them with our decision tonight, nor should we be saddling the future generations of Trojans with this project. So I must vote no. The ordinance passes 4-3. Ordinance 56. Ordinance authorizing the reconveyance of real property acquired by interim foreclosure, 1037 Sixth Avenue. Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration.
Is there a motion?
No.
Councilmember Brosnan, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Vera, discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Vote, 7-0. Ordinance 57. Ordinance authorizing the reconveyance of real property required by interim foreclosure, 1035 Sixth Avenue. Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration. Is there a motion?
No.
Councilmember Sorrento with a second by Councilwoman Brosnan. Discussion. Home in favor?
Aye.
Vote, 7-0. Resolution, resolution 108. Appointing commissioners of streets from the City of Troy. Councilmember Casey, at the request of the administration. Is there a motion?
No.
Councilmember Brosnan, second?
Second.
Councilmember McLaren, discussion.